Call to order the August 9th meeting of the Cary Town Council, and I would ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're at our first evidentiary hearing. It's the Green Level Baptist Church, 18DP 0131. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has requested a modification to town development standards. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we're in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is a lot different from public hearings. It's like a court case. Council acts like a judge, and we can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. North Carolina and the United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing. The Constitution ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. And so I apologize in advance for what might seem burdensome or a complex process. We can only consider competent material, substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether the development will affect property values, or increase traffic resulting in this development, pose a danger to safety, and other issues. To those that are with us this evening intending to testify that are not experts, we can accept testimony from you on factual issues and what you have observed. So you might say, "I have seen ten cars at this intersection during this timeframe. I have observed that." You cannot say, "I think that's dangerous," or "I think that's traffic congestion," or "I think..." anything that involves an opinion. You can only state facts. The hearing and procedures, and remember, this isn't our rules. These are constitutional rules we're following. The hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. And we'll pause at this time to allow those who would like to speak to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths, and council will refrain from taking any action during this time. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yerha.
I have not, Mayor.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Mr. France?
No, sir.
I haven't either. Ms. Robinson?
I haven't.
Mr. George. All right, very good. At this time, I would, based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, I would invite any party to this matter to the podium if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Any objections? Seeing none, I'll now open the quasi-judicial hearing, and Mr. Hales of our staff will introduce this item.
Good evening, council, and thank you. We're starting this evening off with a pair of modification requests associated with Green Level Baptist Church's plans to add an 18,000-square-foot addition to their existing education building. The town's land development ordinance requires that a project of this scope widen the adjacent road frontage of Green Level Church Road, and both modifications you'll be hearing this evening are related to that requirement. The church sanctuary and education building and its immediate surroundings contribute to the Green Level National Historic District, shown in blue. The majority of the district is rural agriculture and residential properties. A portion of the Sutherland subdivision lies within the northern half of the district. Several notable examples of colonial revival and Gothic revival architecture can be found in the area, including the church's sanctuary building we'll be discussing this evening. The existing sanctuary for Green Level Baptist is a most direct import this evening. It was established, the church was established in the early 1870s, and the existing sanctuary building was constructed around the turn of the 20th century. Sanctuary is a notable example of Gothic revival architecture, with the pointed arches and steep gables reminiscent of Gothic cathedrals. In this photo from the Green Level Church Road, you can see the brick stoop on the front of the existing church. This stoop is approximately 35 feet from the edge of pavement for Green Level Church Road today. The land development ordinance requires development to widen the adjacent roadways consistent with the planned roadway widths map in the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The map identifies Green Level Church Road in this section as a four-lane median-divided thoroughfare. And the required cross-section includes an 18-foot planted median and a 100-foot wide right-of-way based on the center line. This typical section may be considered inconsistent with the character of the historic district. In addition, the right-of-way width conflicts with the location of some of the contributing structures within the historic district, including the church's sanctuary. However, council recognized these potential conflicts during the adoption of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. The Green Level Special Planning Area within the plan was created in recognition of the unique opportunities provided in this area of southwest Cary. The Special Planning Area includes a note directing that context-sensitive thoroughfare and streetscape designs be used to protect the Green Level Historic District's context and historic resources. To that end, the town is working with SEPI Engineering to study the corridor between Goodhope School Road and Green Level West Road. This study is expected to generate context-sensitive road sections and streetscapes for the study area. SEPI is currently updating the traffic volumes and modeling anticipated capacity needs and turning movements, and the first of two open houses scheduled to collect public comment on the corridor is scheduled in late September. There is currently no project in the town's capital improvement budget for making improvements in this corridor at the town's behest. The town and church have been engaged in dialogue, and both seek to find the right solution for the area. However, the church's construction needs have outpaced the town's study, therefore the church is required to seek the modifications before you this evening. So council is being asked to make two separate modification decisions. The first is request to modify the amount of right-of-way to be dedicated along a portion of the frontage of the church. Keep in mind, developers are generally required to dedicate only their half of the right-of-way, in this case, which would be 50 foot from the center line. The church is requesting to dedicate only 40 feet from the center line of Green Level Church Road for a portion of the frontage, approximately 360 feet north from the southern property line, and this is a 10-foot reduction from the typical LDO requirement. To provide some context to the request, we'll walk through this one step at a time since it can get a little complicated. Existing right-of-way for the subject property is shown here in green. It's approximately 30 feet from the front door and approximately 20 feet from the stoop. There's an existing sidewalk in front of the church that falls outside of the public right-of-way in its current state. The right-of-way identified in the planned roadway width map would be located at the front edge of the stoop and about 10 feet from the church's front door. Full dedication would likely require removal and/or significant reconstruction of the stoop that exists today. As a result, the church is proposing to modify the dedication for the southern portion of the site. Proposed right-of-way, 40 foot from the center line, would place the right-of-way line approximately three feet behind the edge of the sidewalk, bringing sidewalk into the public realm. The modified right-of-way would be about 20 feet from the front door of the church and about 10 foot from the stoop as it exists today. Once past the existing partridge north of the sanctuary, the church would dedicate the full 50-foot of right-of-way required by the Imagine Cary Community Plan. To give council an idea of what might be possible within the reduced 80-foot right-of-way, this is a typical cross-section for a four-lane undivided thoroughfare. Note that this is merely one example of what could fit within the right-of-way and is not an anticipated result of the study as it moves forward. The corridor study is still in information gathering process, and no potential sections have been discussed to date. The second modification being requested is an acceptance of a payment in lieu in the amount of $0 for improvements along the frontage. Typically, the developer would be required to install a curb and gutter and additional pavement width for their half of the road. The church's engineer prepared an estimate of the construction cost for those improvements, which amounted to approximately $357,000. There's no provision in the land development ordinance to completely waive the improvement requirement, however, council may accept a payment in lieu in an amount less than the total estimate. Therefore, the request is worded the way it is. This concludes staff's initial presentation. Following the applicant and any other speakers, we will return to the podium briefly to summarize our observations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hales. At this time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of my client, Green Level Baptist Church. Here with me tonight is Judy Howell of Green Level Baptist Church. She has been kind of overseeing this construction project on behalf of the church. She's going to provide some brief comments associated with the church and its historic place in the Green Level Historic Area. Also here with me is Mr. Ken Loring of CLH Design. They've provided land planning and engineering for the plans that have been submitted with the town and provide evidence associated with the findings that you all have to make. I will keep my comments brief since Ken ultimately is the expert on this matter. Kevin's done a great job of summarizing the nature of the request. I will note that, you know, the Cary Community Plan notes that context-sensitive solutions and right-of-way widths and right-of-way location should be sought in this area, and we think this modification is entirely consistent with that context-sensitive idea. Green Level Baptist Church is essentially dedicating as much right-of-way as they possibly can without impacting the historic structure. Further, with respect to the payment in lieu, as is noted in the staff report, we believe that the request for payment in lieu is reasonable under the circumstances because the sanctuary size isn't being increased. And so as a result of that, there won't be any additional impact to the transportation facilities associated with this particular use. And so with that, I will conclude my remarks and hand it off to Ms. Howell for a few remarks about the church. Thank you.
I might need something to stand on back here. Good evening. I'm Judy Howell. I am the co-chair of the renovation committee at Green Level Baptist Church. I've been a member there for over 40 years. So at this point in time, I would certainly like to recognize the members of the church who have showed up tonight. Please, would you stand?
That's why I couldn't hear it.
So pretty much everybody.
So we have a good attendance tonight in spite of the fact that we've got Vacation Bible School going on at the same time, so we have a lot of members that are busy doing that. But I kind of wanted to give you an overview of the church and the community itself to kind of let you know where we came from. Basically, Green Level Community itself dates back to the early 1800s. There was a level and green area that was a popular place along the Pittsboro Sage Coach Road that ran from Pittsboro to Raleigh, near where the Green Level Crossroads is today. The cattlemen drove their cattle from Chattanooga, Western Wake County, to Raleigh along this road. There was also Whiskey Tavern where the men could get refreshments, making it a potter stop that was close to the crossroads. Because of the Green Level area and this particular location, it was decided that Green Level should be the name of that. Pretty original, I think. Green Level was founded around 1800 and is one of the oldest surviving crossroad communities in the Raleigh area. In 2001, the Green Level Historic District was added to the U.S. National Registry of Historic Places. This whole community makes up about 75 acres for the Historic District like Kevin talked about earlier. The church itself, the center of the Green Level Historic District, is Green Level Baptist Church. The church originally started in the Whiskey Tavern that was at the crossroads. It's kind of interesting you'd have a church start in a whiskey tavern. But anyhow, the first church was organized as Providence Missionary Baptist Church. September 3rd, 1870 was the original church. The name was changed to Green Level Baptist Church, September 4th, 1871. Construction began on the present sanctuary in 1904, and it was completed in 1906. The sanctuary is featured in the historic architecture of Wake County by Kelly Lally as one of the best preserved examples of rural church architecture in Wake County. It features the typical Gothic revival details such as the pointed arch windows and vents and a tower at the central bay like Kevin talked about earlier. The church has gone through several renovations over the years. In September, or basically in September 2001, a major renovation was done on the church. We had a lot of termite damage and things such as that because of the age of the church. We needed to add a lot of handicap accessibility, so that was done at the same time. We added new windows and new doors and a new HVAC system. All of this was completed while maintaining the integrity of the existing sanctuary for the architect of the church. As a result of the renovation, in 2003, Green Level Baptist Church received the Anthemian Award for Historic Preservation presented by the Capital Area Preservation for Excellence and Historic Preservation. Green Level Baptist Church was placed in the National Registry of Historic Places in 2001. The church remains the focal point of the community today. Embossed on the ceiling of the church itself looks like a big compass. Some people think it looks like a cross, but actually it looks like a compass, and it denotes the direction of north, south, east, and west pointing in each direction on the ceiling. And it indicates where the church was actually built, up on top of the hill. So you can see it from pretty much anywhere when you're coming up the hill or anywhere around Green Level. You can see the church and from any direction which I think was the intent of the forefathers of the church. So as you know, Green Level is in the heart of a very rapidly growing area. So due to this growth, our church has also grown. As a result, our children's areas are bursting out the seams. Therefore, the church has decided to embark on this ambition renovation plan with our children as our main focal point. We're asking for the council to support our plans so Green Level Baptist Church can continue to be the focal point of this wonderful community. Thank you.
And I really wish this was a zoning case because I would be done at this point. This would be way more boring, no offense to Mr. Loring. At this time, Mr. Mayor, I'll call Ken Loring with CLH Design to discuss the land development ordinance standards.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Ken Loring. I live at 203 Forest Run in Cary. I have went to UNCG for my four-year degree. I'm a licensed professional engineer and a licensed professional land surveyor in North Carolina. I've been with CLH Design for almost 22 years and a principal there for 21 of them. We were hired to prepare site plan and construction plans for the church, primarily for the educational facility. They were doing the expansion with a drop-off zone, and none of the proposed building is any closer to the existing right-of-way. So we're meeting the full extent of the LDO except regards to the proposed right-of-way, which we've already talked about with the 50-foot widening from the center line. But it is problematic that the setback, the nonconformity, would impact the existing structure that would probably have to come down when the widening for that 50-foot right-of-way would ever occur. So the church is proposing a 40-foot width for the southern 360 feet. The full extent to which would be dedicated without having to modify the existing building. Either scenario, the additional education facility is fully compliant, so the addition itself is not causing the problem, but it's just that the existing building is. So it's important to note that the church is dedicating the full extent of the right-of-way for the remainder of the property to the north, and about a lower third to the south is where the narrower right-of-way will be. There is no doubt that the modifications advance the goal of the proposed, to the ordinance. The Cary Community Plan values the historic preservation of structures, and Green Level Baptist Church is one of them. Requested modifications would save the structure, and your approval for this request would result in a less visual impact to the corridor by having any physical changes to the church. There'll be less road widening as a part of that, of course. Most importantly, the modification will help preserve longstanding fixture along the corridor since the building was built in 1906, has remained in place since then. It meets the requirements for historic building. To require full compliance to the LDO is required modification to historic facade, which would result in significant impacts to the corridor. As a result, payment in lieu, the widening of the road is not desirable at this time since it would be context-sensitive to the historic district. The fact that the town has hired an outside consultant to review the road widening in this area and how it could be context-sensitive makes us acknowledge the fact that the current plan would not meet that condition. That the road would be widened in the future is obvious because of the continuing growth. At this time, the $0 payment is reasonable because the proposed expansion is in response of an existing demand and not anticipated to bring in any more or more patrons to the church. The capacity of sanctuary is proposed to remain the same. Therefore, payment of any amount for the road widening is unreasonable as it is not proportion-related to the church's expansion in its educational facility, is my professional opinion that requested modifications meet the LDO requirements for approval. The reduced right-of-way is consistent with the spirit of the LDO and the result of less visual impact than the full compliance would be. The required payment in lieu advances the goals and purposes of the LDO because the road widening is undesirable at this time. If there are any questions, if there are no questions, I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Barron. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we'll conclude our presentation of evidence. We'll ask that the town council accept into record the staff report along with the associated exhibits and take judicial acknowledgement of the contents of the land development ordinance and the town's other adopted plans. And so with that, we believe that the evidence supports the request at hand, and we respectfully request you all's approval of the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. At this time, I'd invite speakers who've been sworn in and want to speak in favor of this application to approach the podium. Anyone to speak in favor that's been sworn in. Seeing no one will continue, and I would offer up to either party cross-examination of the witness. I get a no's. And now we'll open it up to those who are opposed to this request, and if you've been sworn in and would like to speak in opposition, I would ask that you come to the podium now. Seeing no one will continue, and I'll call on staff to provide professional observations about the requests.
Thank you again. In regards to the right-of-way dedication, one of the fundamental purposes of the LDO is to enact and implement the policies of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. And that plan recognizes the importance of the historic context of the Green Level Community and the contributions that the historic districts, the historic structures within that district make to that context. That's why the note's in the plan. And to that end, the reduction in right-of-way width represents a compromise between the right-of-way the town may need to accommodate future capacity needs in the corridor while retaining some spatial separation between the road and the historic structure that contributes to that historic context. The modification is also being requested only for the existing developed portion of the property and not the entire property, so the southern third would be modified and the northern two-thirds would be dedicated to the full 50-foot required by the ordinance. The payment in lieu modification is related a lot to the uncertainty of the future cross-section. The $357,000 estimate is based on a full four-lane median-divided section, which we think may be very likely to be larger than the section that's ultimately going to be needed to that corridor in order to maintain the historic context. Additionally, the church is making some contribution in the dedication of the right-of-way. They're dedicating approximately one acre, a little over one acre, with the assessed tax value that comes to a total of about $87,000 worth of right-of-way they're dedicating as part of this project. That concludes staff's observations. If you have any questions, we'll be available while you deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any cross-examination needed? All right. Does any party believe there's been new evidence presented that will require continuance? Okay, keep on going. We now open the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I'll open it up to council members for comments or questions. Seems pretty straightforward to me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have questions.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have several questions, actually. So, Mr. Hale, my first question is, going back to Slide 17, can you point on your arrow where the 40-foot right-of-way comes to in this picture in front of the building, and then where the 50-foot would come to?
So, I'm going to be guesstimating because I can't scale on an oblique, but, so the proposed 40-foot right-of-way would be approximately three feet behind this existing sidewalk. So the sidewalk today is on private property. It's not within the right-of-way. The right-of-way would be dedicated to bring the sidewalk into the public realm, which it normally would be, three feet behind there. The 50 feet falls right within this column. I mean, again, there's a few inches on a scale drawing, so it would likely require the stoop to be removed or drastically remodeled. It's right along that edge.
Okay.
So there's 13 feet or so between the sidewalk and the stoop today.
And is there a possibility of any of the design, road designs, coming back that would creep beyond the 40-foot right-of-way?
My understanding in discussions we've had to date, and we don't have proposed designs yet, we're still in a very investigative phase, that any modification that council grounds this evening would be based, would be a basis for holding that right-of-way line and designing outside of that.
Pushing it to...
It may be an asymmetrical solution, depending on what comes back.
Okay, so we adopt the 40-foot right-of-way, and then all designs would adhere to that. There'd be no chance it would be 43 feet, and then we're going back to the church hoping that the little dedication would be more feet or anything like that.
The current anticipated direction is that we would hold the 40-foot that you modified tonight.
Have you had a conversation with the church that if it should creep beyond that 40 feet, let's say an additional foot or two or three, that the church is willing to work with us and dedicate the right-of-way at that time?
We haven't had that conversation, to the best of my knowledge, yet. Again, we're anticipating, our expectation is that the 40-foot would be the line unless something goes horribly.
Right. I think if we're agreeing on 40 feet tonight, we're setting that 40 feet in stone.
Are we? That's what, I was unclear about that.
Or they'd have to come back and request another modification if anything were to change in the future.
No, we would be, I mean, that's what I'm asking, is if we agree to 40 feet tonight, are we committing to not exceeding beyond that 40 feet for the cross-section that this designer's coming up?
Unless condemnation. So if we needed three more feet, we condemn.
You don't have to condemn. You could negotiate. We could negotiate, and it would be nice if they didn't charge us for it.
Mayor, let me add too, and we're talking about a road width on a plan. We still don't have a capital project, so to talk about whether we go to condemnation or the church has another future expansion project, you may cross this bridge at another time as well.
Is this a state road?
It's a state road.
So, being the chair of Campo, I can say it's not on there either.
Yeah, right.
So that means 10 years out at least.
Okay. You know, I've been under the impression that when we collect fees or we expect people to do their part of their frontage, it's not because of, it's not based on traffic generation. It's based on being basically a player in the community, and that's their responsibility to do the frontage. And so we heard a couple times tonight, well, we're not increasing the amount of traffic, so therefore we should be waived of the contribution.
That's the applicant's position. That's true.
That's the applicant's position, but that, okay. So, but I mean, from staff's perspective, that's not typically, we don't typically tie traffic generation to constructing the frontage.
Correct. The LDO requirement is not based on traffic generation. It is based on the planned roadway width map that is adopted as part of the Imagine Cary Plan. And so we expect you to widen to what that plan is. However, the plan includes in this case a note that says, "Hey, we recognize there's some conflicts here, and something different may be appropriate," and this is the conversation about something different.
Okay. Well, I feel like it's... Well, I feel like it's important to clarify that so that there's no confusion about why we would waive this because it's not just for this particular case, but for future applicants who come to us and say, well, they didn't generate any traffic, therefore you waived it, and we're not generating any traffic, so now waive ours. So let's make it perfectly clear. If we waive this, it's because it's a unique situation, it's historic property, it's a sensitive property, but it's not because they don't generate the traffic.
Sure.
Okay. I just want that to be on writing, because I don't want to be hit with this another, you know, six weeks down the road.
Can you remind me how big the expansion is going to be?
Just over 18,000 square feet.
18,000, okay. But not any additional traffic expected to be generated because...
Correct. Typically, the town considers those accessory uses to the church.
Correct.
So their big draws is usually on Sunday, right?
Right.
So they're not expanding sanctuary.
Yeah, and then, and what I was just saying is it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if they did or not because that's not why we widen the frontage. That's why we improve an intersection nearby, but that's not why we widen the frontage.
Correct. And that's in the staff report. None of the findings are about the traffic. It's just about...
Okay.
About the historic context, really.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Just a question, a quick question. Are there other places in town where we perhaps have a, because of a structure, is it a normally wider road narrows for a short period of time rather than, I know we route sidewalks all around big trees. Do we, is this a...
I'm hesitant to answer that question in any absolutes. There are definitely some structures, especially in downtown, when you think about the Mount Zion Baptist Church, for instance, it's very close to Chapel Hill Road, and we know that something's going to happen at some point in that road corridor. It would obviously have to be engineered. It can't be a sudden dip. You're not going to have a, like a little loop around a power pole like you would of the sidewalk.
Right.
To answer your question.
Yeah, I guess it's just that five-foot, I guess that five-foot potential offset, certainly it looked like could be, anyway, I'm fine. I'm fine. No more questions.
Other questions?
So, I just want to understand, normally, we wouldn't have this context-sensitive study going on at the same time as, as somebody would be coming with a, you know, a modification or basically enhancing their own facility, which is what kicks off the requirement to improve the road in front of the building, right? Is that...
It's always possible.
It's always possible.
Correct.
Have we done a payment of lieu of $0 when it was, you know, estimated to be $357? Let's say it was going to be built at the four-lane. Have we done something like this before?
We've done some fairly significant, Cary Academy, for instance, when they did their science expansion, did a fairly large payment of lieu in the mountain.
Okay. And, and that was, the reason behind that was similar? I mean, it wasn't historic, but it was, you know, associated with...
It was associated with...
Unknown.
Unknown future corridor needs.
Future uses.
And then it was also way back in the back of the site where they're adding the addition and they were making the case that they're not touching that part right now.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Well, that reminded me of the one, though, because part of the Cary Academy was burying, they have to bury power lines because, but then the power company said there were no plans to do that. I see power lines in this picture, I suppose. Is burying power lines part of any of that?
That would be part of the improvements that they're not going to be making.
Okay.
Would be burying the power lines. It's actually less than 1,000 square feet, too. Duke Energy Progresses, the rule of thumb is 1,000 square feet, so they'd be able to get a letter saying it was impractical, probably.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the public, we'll move to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and I would open it up to council members for motion on modifications A and B.
Okay. I make a motion to approve modification requests. For the reasons that we discussed, I move that we approve the modification requests made by the applicant as the request meets all of the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I understand your excitement, but we usually don't do that. Mr. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'll close this public hearing. All right, we'll close this public hearing and move to our second public hearing. We're now at our last evidentiary hearing. LNL Performance 17 SU 002. This case is before us tonight because we have the applicant, because the applicant has required special use permit. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Council members act like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent, material and substantial. North Carolina and the United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in every evidentiary hearing. Constitution ties our hands on what evidence we can accept, and I apologize for what might seem burdensome or complex process. We consider competent material and substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept testimony from expert witnesses regarding this development will affect property values, whether it will increase traffic resulting from the development or propose or pose a danger to public safety to those that are with us this evening intending to testify that are not expert witnesses. I can only say that you can make statements on what is factual and what you have observed. Our contractual attorney who is sitting to my left will help determine who's an expert and who is not and what we can consider. Our hearing procedures, detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. So at this time, we'll allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oath, and I can see they're all queued up and ready to go, and the council will refrain from taking any action during this time.
That's pretty nice.
Now, I'll take this moment to ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge or a close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my right with Mr. George.
I have not.
Mrs. Robinson.
I have not.
Mr. Smith.
I have not.
I have not.
I have not.
All right. Based on the evidence you've heard, or disclosures you've heard from council members, I would invite any party, excuse me, to come to the podium at this time if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing no one will continue, I'll open up the quasi-judicial public hearing, and Mr. Loveland of our staff will introduce this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. LNL Performance is proposing to locate a motorcycle sales business at an existing building at 1613 Walnut Street. The development ordinance requires that that use at this location be a special use, and as you are aware, that requires town council authorization. The property is located on the north side of Walnut Street. It is northwest of the intersection of Walnut Street and US Highway 164 to help you place this property. Notice that the property has no direct frontage onto Walnut Street. Rather, it is located behind an existing convenience store. It takes access to Walnut Street through an existing access easement. Property is located to the west of a retail center. There's also, aside from the convenience store, also retail on the south side of Walnut Street, fast food restaurant to the southwest. The properties to the north and the northwest are multifamily residential. The property is located within a general commercial conditional use zoning district and within a mixed-use overlay district. As I mentioned, the LDO requires this as a special use. It falls within the motor vehicle sales and rental use type, which is a special use in the general commercial district. There are two existing properties located on the site. The applicant is proposing to locate in the southern building. The northern building is currently occupied by a auto service center and is not associated with this request. This view gives a good, good look at the fronts of the two buildings located on the site. To the left, you have the existing service center located off-site. To the right, you have the service center building, and in the center, you have the building that the applicant is proposing to occupy. That building is 2,400 square feet in size, according to Wake County tax records. Here is a recent picture of the front facade of the building. The applicant is not proposing to make any site changes. They are not proposing to alter any of the facades. There are therefore no development plans associated with this request. Only the special use request, only the seven findings associated with the special use. I know council's aware of the approval criteria that goes along with the special use, but to remind the applicant and the audience, these are the approval criteria associated with the special use. It is the obligation of the applicant to show these are being met prior to approval of the plan. With that, I'll hand, hand the podium over to the applicant, who can provide more detailed information on the nature of the business and, and the use. I will return after the public has provided testimony to present our conclusion.
Thank you, Mr. Loveland. This time, I'll invite the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the applicable criteria.
Thank you, Mayor Weinberg. Mayor Weinberg, members of the council, staff, Mr. Silverstein. I'm Bob Brady. I practice law locally in Cary, and I represent LNL tonight in this application for special use permit. I only have a few words to say about this application because I think most of the information that the council needs to hear will come from two experts that will testify and the principal of LNL, who I think will give you an idea of exactly what's proposed to be operated on this site. The two experts that I have will be Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals and Taylor Honeycutt with Exalt Engineering. Mr. Kirkland, of course, to deal with the property evaluations and the impact of use of this property on other adjacent properties. And Mr. Honeycutt to address the traffic impact, if any, that this special use will have on the property. The first witness I would like to call, however, is Mr. Jerry Lasalvia, who is the proprietor of LNL, operating now out of Sanford, North Carolina. And I would like for Mr. Lasalvia to tell you exactly what his operations will be here in Cary, North Carolina.
Hello. How are you guys, ladies and gentlemen? My name is Gino Lasalvia. If you decide to buy a motorcycle from me, you'll call me Jerry. It's just easier to explain, considering I have a country accent like I do. Pretty much what I do is I sell street bikes, sell motorcycles, some ATVs. The building that I'm actually working out of now, we've had our business license since 1989, and it's an old wholesale building. It's located in Sanford, North Carolina. We've been, like I said, my father started the business, and when we started, mostly what we would do would put motorcycles on consignment at local dealerships on Fayetteville, Raleigh, a lot of different areas, and they would sell the motorcycles and then pay us afterwards. My dad, my father passed away in 97. I took over the business. I started retailing to customers. That's kind of what I wanted to go with. I didn't really like the wholesale business too much. The majority of my business is internet-based. Because I'm in a rural area now and it's a wholesale building, I don't get a lot of drive-by traffic. So, pretty much I've learned to actually build my business off just internet. So, the majority of the people that would want to purchase a motorcycle from me would call me. They would see my stuff on a website or on some kind of advertising platform that I have affiliated with Cycle Trader or one of those places. They would give me a call. I would explain the process to them, how they could fill out a finance application. Once they fill out the finance application, you know, I tell people not to come until I already know whether I can get them approved or not. That way they don't waste a trip. But most of the time, they'll fill out the finance application, and a lot of times I'll have to guide them through it. They fill it out. I run their, you know, if I can get them approved, that's when they would come actually to my shop. Mostly what I do is by appointment only. I do have normal business hours, normally 10 to 6 through Monday through Friday, and then 10 to 2 on Saturday. And I also accommodate my customers that say they work seven days a week and they need to come after hours. I'll be glad to meet someone after hours as long as they give me at least a 24-hour notice. Let's see. A lot of my customers are from the Triangle area, you know, Cary, Raleigh, Durham, Hobbit Springs, Apex. One of the main reasons, well, actually, I have two main reasons for moving this direction. One of the main reasons is I have a lot of customers in this area and I'm trying to save them a drive. It just seems more appropriate to me to have a location that's here in the Triangle area instead of having it, you know, in Sanford, which is a little distance away. Another one of my reasons is I actually go to Hope Community Church. I've been there for 12 years. It's right down the street. My daughter started school there today. Well, actually, today was her kindergarten, was her first day. So she goes to Grace, which is next to Hope, which, as you probably know, is right down the street. So it kind of works out really well for me. And I believe that's about it. This is my first time doing this, so I apologize.
You're doing a great job.
Or did something wrong, I apologize.
Hang in there.
Mr. Lasalvia, could I ask you, there's been, there's been a statement made or a comment made about the potential noise factor that this operation may cause for the area. Could you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yes, I actually, he had said something to me about the noise, and I actually do not start motorcycles. I mean, I start them outside, but I do not allow test drives. I have not allowed a test drive in 15 years. I had an issue with a customer one time that said he knew how to ride, he didn't know how to ride, and there's a lot of liability involved with that if I allow someone to ride a motorcycle and they don't know what they're doing. So my offer to them, which most people do not accept, is that I will take them for a ride and they can ride on the back. But the majority of my customers don't want to do that, so they would rather, they would rather just research what they're looking at, you know, and most people know before they go to purchase a motorcycle exactly what they're getting into, you know. So, yeah, I won't be starting, I won't be doing test rides, like I said, unless somebody wants to ride with me, which is unlikely, so. Is that pretty much satisfied?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lasalvia. At this point, I'd call Mr. Rich Kirkland.
Hi, Rich Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state-certified general appraiser, been appraising for over 20 years in the area. I'm actually, grew up in Cary, so I've got experience in that direction as well. I'm also an MAI through the Appraisal Institute. Like I said, I'm real familiar with this. I grew up in Ivy Meadows, so I, as a kid, I actually babysat some kids in Williamsburg Manor, the adjoining apartments. We rode our bikes through the neighborhoods, and I would actually visit the fast fair that this was when I was a kid, bought my comics and candy there. So, it's funny, it comes out, this place holds a place in my mind, and recalling the Ford dealership that used to be next door.
Helmode. Helmode. Helmode Ford.
Yep.
That's right.
The, actually, the building that the transmission shop's in was actually a dirt field. Me and my friends would actually throw frisbees out there and do whatever, and as odd as it sounds, I still can't even explain why, but we used to collect bottle caps out there, and you could find just piles of them out there. So I don't know what the teenagers were doing, but there were a lot of bottle caps. So, but anyway, coming forward today, I've looked at this, looking at this, the question is whether or not it's going to have an impact on adjoining property values and whether or not it's a harmonious location. To that end, again, I've looked at the adjoining uses. You've got the transmission shop that's on the same parcel, that's just to the north of that second building on the parcel. There's the big box shopping center, Devonshire Place. You've got the Shell Station. You've got the out, or Cookout, and then Williamsburg Manor. So when it comes down to it, the area you're really asking a question about is really the apartments, because this is really a commercial use surrounded by commercial uses next to these older apartments. Again, those apartments are already adjoining those same commercial uses that I just outlined and also adjoining the transmission shop. The building isn't really changing. The building is where it's at. The use of it inside is going to be essentially a retail facility and having no more noise or impact on the adjoining properties than it would have with any other type of retail use going there. To that end, I've looked at, trying to think of other things that would be similar. I've looked at auto parts stores around Cary. I've looked at hardware stores around Cary and just looked to see if they have adjoining multifamily uses. I've looked, identified several that I would point out. Let's see, the Advanced Auto Parts on Highway 55, it joins actually single-family homes and has apartments across the street. Again, very similar use, and the other adjoining use would be a shopping center, very similar location. Napa Auto Parts on Chatham Street, it's got some commercial uses along that and backs up to across the train tracks, the Madison Townhomes. up to, across the train tracks, the Madison Townhomes. Again, the Advanced Auto Parts, the other one that we, later, when I got a little older, when we moved to Cary High, we moved over to Killdeer Farms over in Stony Brook, so then I was riding my bike over there a bit. And, again, we used to go over there to that center to hit Little Caesar's and everything else. There's an Advanced Auto Parts there, and it backs up to multifamily. It's really common, this type of use, they're synergizing, and frequently, it's because multifamily tends to serve as a buffer between single-family and commercial development. It's my professional opinion that this proposed use of this location's not going to have any impact on adjoining property values. It's also my professional opinion that it's a harmonious location. If you asked me to come up with a use that would fit between a transmission shop and a gas station in that building right in there, it would be hard-pressed to find something that fit better. So, again, it's my professional opinion that it's a harmonious location, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into any greater detail. I could talk about my childhood for as long as you'd like.
Maybe later.
Yeah, sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. At this point, I'd like to call Mr. Taylor Honeycutt with Exalt Engineering.
Hey, good evening. As Mr. Brady mentioned, I'm Taylor Honeycutt with Exalt Engineering. I am currently licensed as a professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. I've been in engineering for roughly eight years, and Mr. Brady and Jerry asked me to kind of analyze the use of this from a traffic perspective, and, you know, based on our analysis, we use the 10th generation, sorry, 10th edition of the Trip Generation Manual, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that's currently adopted by NC DOT, and ran through Mr. Lasalvia's new use case with the square footage, and came up with a daily, you know, a daily increase of traffic of 68 cars, 68 trips. And so, that's a daily total, you know, in the AM, roughly five trips, and then 26 trips in the PM. And so, when you take a closer look at the total traffic along Walnut Street, as everybody knows, it's a very busy street, and, you know, the latest available data of annual average or average annual daily traffic is 31,000 vehicles per day, and so, when you do a simple calculation of the percentage increase, 68, that's roughly 0.2% increase, which, in my professional opinion, is a negligible impact to the congestion and traffic in the area. Are there any questions? If there are no questions?
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to tender Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Honeycutt as experts. It is the applicant's position that the testimony of the experts and the testimony of applicant have sufficed to satisfy the criteria for the approval of the special use permit that he's applied for. The noise factor that we were somewhat concerned about, I think, has been addressed sufficiently by Mr. Lasalvia. No repairs will be occasioned on this property, and no test drives, I think he explained that somewhat humorously quite well, though. The use that this property needs to be put to is a use that would make it occupied and productive, not only for the individual that occupies it and the owner of the property, but also for the town. You heard Mr. Lasalvia tell you that a lot of his customers come from the Triangle area. To put a motorcycle shop, I don't believe there's another one in Cary, but to put in a motorcycle shop in Cary, I think benefits the town, number one, because it will increase traffic through the town, benefits the proprietor, number two, because of the income and the business that he will generate, and it benefits the owner of the property, because he now has a property that is vacant, which is not an attractive site, and will not become any more attractive unless it is occupied and put to a useful, a useful use. In our opinion, all the criteria for approval of the special use permit have been satisfied, and we'd ask the council to unanimously approve it.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite those who've been sworn in to speak, who would like to speak in favor of this application, to approach the podium. Anyone to speak in favor? Seeing no one, we'll ask each party if they have any reason to, oh, any reason to cross-examine what we've seen so far, all right. So, now, open it up to those who've been sworn in to like to speak in opposition to the request. Anyone in opposition? All right, very good. Does either party believe there's any evidence presented tonight to continue this hearing? I'm seeing no. And I'll turn it over to staff, who will provide their professional observations about this request.
Thank you. Just to run back through again, there are no proposed changes to the existing site. There is no development plan, so the findings are just the seven findings for the special use approval. On the motion sheet, we have suggested some conditions regarding limiting the use to the southern building, which the applicant has stated as his intent, but also to limit the use to no outdoor storage. There's a development standard for this use that would require a 30-foot wide buffer around any outdoor storage area, which would make any proposed outdoor storage impractical at best, or perhaps impossible, given the tight confines of the site. I believe the applicant had previously indicated they're agreeable to that. Our council has the authority to grant, to impose these conditions, whether the applicant's agreeable or not. I don't know if the applicant wants to weigh in on whether they have objections to these conditions, but a suggestion of staff that these would be beneficial.
Completely receptive to that.
Okay. And with that, I'd just conclude and say we're available for questions.
Okay, stay right there, I'll start.
Okay.
I only have a couple. Want to confirm that special uses are tied to the property and not to the applicant, not to the owner.
Yes, sir, correct.
So, this applicant could get approval and trade it to somebody or sell it to somebody tomorrow, and we'd have a different applicant who maybe feel totally different. Based on that, I'm thinking the worst-case scenarios, business hours that were mentioned, test drives that were mentioned, are they enforceable through this special use permit? Or is that a condition offered?
If they're not a condition, then they're generally not enforceable, unless they feel otherwise.
They could be added as conditions. I would leave it to staff to advise you on how easy or hard it might be to enforce those in the future.
Please advise.
Okay, we're being hard.
Hours of operation are generally difficult for us to enforce.
I'm not as concerned about that as much as the noise factor, which we talked about, and the test drives. That's very key to me, so.
Test drives are really somewhat incidental to a motor vehicle use. I think that's just inextricably tied to that use. I don't know how you could potentially permit this use and not allow test drives.
I will tell you, most motorcycle dealerships, period, do not allow test drives.
Okay.
I mean, it's-
That's good information, and I-
One little oops, you lay that thing down, you just trashed a bike. It's not happening.
Okay. I trust you, an automotive dealer, repairs, so. Any other comments, questions?
I had a, yeah, I was at first thinking about this, hours and cranking motorcycles after hours, but motorcycles need gas, and it's next to a gas station. So, what's to stop people from coming by there and getting gas at a gas station, whether they buy a motorcycle there or not? So, I don't think, I mean, to me, it's like, I don't see any, have any noise issues. That was my first thought, but I thought, people cut them bikes off, they fill them up, they crank them up again, you're not going to stop it at the gas station. If they've been doing that all these years, next to the apartments, then I don't see any difference in having motorcycles being sold.
I would agree. You've also got a lot of noise being generated from the transmission shop, whether it's air guns, air compressors, and the like, that just goes on with general automotive service. This use is not going to add any meaningful, significant noise to the area whatsoever, in my opinion.
And during business hours-
Correct.
That would be the shop, because at nighttime, if the gas station's open, they'll be cranking cars and motorcycles. I don't have any problems.
Any other questions?
I have a question of staff. We have a list of four, possibly five, conditions, you know, the five is kind of left up for whatever else we want to add. Do we have to approve all four, or if we didn't want to approve one of them, could we?
That's completely at your discretion.
Okay, because I actually have a little concern with number three. There shall be no outdoor vehicle sales or display area. I don't see any reason why the proprietor shouldn't be allowed to park six, eight, 10, whatever motorcycles out in front of the shop, you know, because the reality is at night, he's going to bring them inside anyway, if not, because if not, he might not be there in the morning. So, I just don't know why that's a concern, I really don't. And if anything, putting some beautiful motorcycles out in front of this building makes this building look better.
So, could you speak to that?
Yeah.
Why? It would be somewhat difficult to do because of the requirement to buffer the display area. If you see on your screen, I just drew up a random display area, I believe that's approximately 500 square feet in size. That's showing how they would have to buffer, so they would have to rip up pavement to install a buffer to meet ordinance requirements. So, if you don't impose that condition, they can potentially do it, but actually implementing it would be difficult.
They could potentially store or display vehicles in this tire area.
I just, I just drew an area just at random to show-
Yeah, well, they can't do it there, because they're like blocking the whole drive aisle, and then-
Well, what would end up happening, if they'd end up having to move it?
Right.
The orange is, I'm showing is what would be a buffer, correct? So, if this were what they came in and say, we want to use that as a display area, and there's a 30-foot buffer off that display area, so what I drew was an orange, what would be a 30-foot buffer, so they'd be ripping up all this parking lot, the driveway could go through it, and that would displace a buffer over here. So, they'd be losing parking spaces to put in a buffer. Well, now, do they meet the parking requirements after they lose all those spaces? It gets very difficult to do. They could shrink this display area, and the buffer shrinks a little bit, but-
So, they have to have a, if they want to park five motorcycles out front, they now have to have 30-foot buffers and stuff on both sides and across?
Yes, sir, correct. That's an ordinance requirement.
Okay, or we can just do it as is, and just park motorcycles out front anyway, because we're not going to be able to enforce it anyway, so.
And that's based on, you know, basically, keep in mind, the use type is vehicle sales. So, motor vehicles could potentially come into this establishment, too. It runs with the land, not with the use, so you can-
No, I get it.
So, if you have a vehicle sales lot, the idea is you can have it, but it needs to be screened from other businesses. This is GC, you could have an ice cream shop right next door. Probably not at this location, but that the ordinance considers all locations.
Does that apply to any business then? Say, for example, the shop to the north, wanted, had three vehicles they wanted to sell, and they parked them out in front of their business with for-sale signs, are they now in violation of the ordinance and would have to provide buffering?
Well, they're not approved for that use, they're an auto repair-
Yeah, but every shop sells cars and stuff. I mean, we just, it's what we do.
The use for, so use to do auto sales and general commercial, there's actually use-
Okay. In practical terms, it's a yes. Okay.
They're going to stop.
I think he knows what to do. All right.
Anyone else with questions or comments? All right. We will move to, well, in the public comment portion of the hearing, and I would ask council for a motion on the special use permit.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the request for special use made by the applicant, as the request meets all of the approval criteria of Section 3.8.3 of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following: The resolution and permit approved of the special use request be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds upon the expiration of the appeal period per Section 3.8.4E of the LDO. The motor vehicle sales rental use may, shall be limited to the smaller of the two buildings located on the property. Doing this one with, yeah. There shall be no outdoor motor vehicle sales or display area. If the motor vehicle sales rental use is not established on or before October 1st, 2019, this approval shall expire. The planning director may grant a single one-year extension of this time limit for good cause, shown as defined in the LDO, upon receiving a written request from the applicant prior to October 1st, 2019.
A second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Silverstein, how do we look?
I don't think you actually closed this hearing.
Not yet. I'm asking you if everything's in order.
Yes.
All right, very good. We'll close the public hearing, and since this is our last quasi-judicial hearing, we're going to take a break and reset the table, and come back and have one discussion item. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, folks.
We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time. We're at our last item, ACT, Act 5, Planning and Zoning Membership and Duties. This item was presented at the last council meeting on July 26th for feedback. The staff has modified the report based on the feedback and has brought it back to council tonight for action. Senior Assistant Attorney Lisa Glover will present the staff's report. Ms. Glover?
Good evening, yes, as you said, this is back before you, and we have made changes as you requested at the last meeting. So, the complete set of amendments, not just the changes, are summarized on this slide. So, what we are proposing now is that the Planning and Zoning Board would determine plan consistency, and they may discuss any matter that any member deems appropriate as they're making that determination. We still would recommend, at this point in time, that a unanimous vote by the board would place an item on your consent agenda, but we can keep evaluating that as we move forward with these changes, and you all can decide if that still works for you or not.
It works.
The second item, as we discussed, the board would no longer conduct public hearings. Instead of an automatic public hearing in front of you all, if conditions have changed, we've changed that wording, just to make it an option, that you all would determine on your own, as the case came back, if you felt a public hearing was needed, then you could call for one. Remember, of course, that the public can always contact you by email and phone, and public speaks out at any council meeting, if they, you know, want to make their concerns known to you. The amendments also standardize the timeframes for submission of new or changed zoning conditions. There were a couple of different timeframes in the existing ordinance, and we've just standardized those, so applicants will have the same time period for any kind of zoning case. Finally, based on the discussion from last time, we are proposing no changes to the role of the ETJ member or to the overall membership- of the ETJ member or to the overall membership of the Planning and Zoning Board. So we hope this captures the intent of what you discussed at the last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
First question is, did we table this at our last council meeting? And if so, do we need to pull it off the table?
It was not officially tabled.
It was not officially tabled. We just postponed it until the next council meeting. Okay. And also, you presented items, just to be clear to myself, you presented items that we made decisions on. We are confirming those items and addressing the items that we didn't finish.
Well, no actual decision was reached at the last meeting. No official vote was taken on anything.
One item wasn't.
I thought we.
Well, you provided guidance.
We weren't changing anything.
A non-binary indication of direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. We straw pulled.
Okay.
We took a straw pull, and we didn't change anything at the meeting so that staff could go off and come back with new verbiage based on the feedback that they heard at the time.
Right, and the one thing that we seemed like we had consensus around wasn't changing anything, so there was no need to take action.
Right, no need to vote on nothing. It wasn't, Lori, it wasn't a plastic straw pull, though.
Oh, no. All right, we'll start with the first item unless there's an objection to, the board may determine plan consistency and discuss any matter that any member deems appropriate.
I would just clarify you what you just said. The board determines plan consistency, not may determine, but they may discuss any matter that the member deems appropriate.
So my opinion, I have no idea what other council members feel about this. I'm, I know that that's a requirement by the state, right?
Yes.
That's a requirement by the state. What I want to know from them is what they feel about the project. What they vote on the requirement by the state, I don't want to say secondary, but it's not as important to me as the rest of it.
I think this captures that. May discuss any matter that any member deems appropriate.
But, but I would actually like that to be part of their vote, and they have to make a decision or comments on the consistency.
A determination.
A determination.
That's the word in the statute.
So I would, I wouldn't mind if they said, I think this is a bad idea. It meets the consistencies, but I think that's a bad idea. And then those are two different determinations.
I think that's captured right here.
You're looking for two votes.
That's right.
We used to have two votes. I thought we were getting away from that.
I know.
You want to go back to two votes.
I don't like to make it more complicated, but I'm trying to figure out a way to get what I want, you know? And maybe I'm standing along, maybe I should be quiet, but.
No, I mean, I understand what you're trying to go for, but I think that we achieve that by having them articulate their concerns, and then those concerns are written up in the staff report.
Okay, so let's play out this scenario. It's a seven to eight to one vote, and the chairman comes up. It was an eight to one vote, however, six of the Planning and Zoning Board members expressed concerns, and here are the concerns. Is that what you envisioned happening?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, and then, you know, we, we have the right to deny a rezoning for any reason at all.
Right, right.
So even if, even if it's consistent.
I just need the information. That's what I'm looking for. I mean, if they say seven to one, but I hear six of them had serious concerns, that's a big difference than seven to one, period.
Yeah, and I think where it's trickier is when it goes on consent.
That's right.
Everybody agrees that it's consistent, so it goes on consent.
But they're all holding their nose when they say that.
But they're all, but they're all like, man, this isn't right, so.
How do we address that?
One thing that we discussed internally is, so there already is a section in each staff report. It's kind of really in the middle that talks about what happened at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, a nice little narrative, and it talks about the questions they had and, you know, can talk about concerns they had and what the vote was. At the very top of the staff report right now is a very short sentence, but that's a spot, so, you know, in the executive summary piece. So some of that conversation from P and Z could be put up closer to the front just so that you see it quicker. Okay, well, it was eight to one or nine to zero, but, you know, members also expressed concerns. So it could be a little clue to you to make sure you go read the rest of it in the middle, you know? So there's, I think, different ways it could be addressed in the structure and the content of the staff report. And of course, whenever it's not on consent, Mr. Evangelista will be here or the chair will be here to let you know what they really talked about.
So, so do we, does Mr. Evangelista here? If everything were on consent, if every vote that was before us that night had been consent and no one clued him in, like after a Monday night agenda meeting, would he be here anyway? Or is there a chance that he wouldn't be here?
I think he's always here.
He always has.
In case you pull it.
He's always.
He's here now.
So even staff members.
We talk about him the third person.
So staff and whoever have to be here because you can pull it at the beginning.
I got it, okay. We have to be, that's good.
I will say, though, if there's any council member that doesn't contact staff or the P and Z chair or whatever up until the meeting, and then they decide to pull it, they are not doing their job as a council member.
I agree, I agree, but it could happen.
It can happen if the council member's not doing their job properly.
I don't know.
There's no reason somebody can't give somebody a couple, few hours heads up. There's none, none, no good reason. Secondly, I would also add that if we're only relying on Mr. Evangelista's report to us at our council meeting, which is incredibly amazing, by the way, and we're not watching the meeting, reviewing the minutes or whatever ourselves, then we are not doing our jobs as members of the council.
Those are both good points. Any other comments?
I would just say that there could be a situation, I'm not, it's black and white. There could be a situation where a council member is walking into the chambers and a group of his citizens come up to him and say, hey, I understand this has a vote of eight to zero, it meets consistency, and I'm, we're really against this, and we're really upset, and we want you to pull it for discussion.
To talk about this issue.
Yeah, they could do it. It could happen.
And they didn't talk about that issue, or whatever.
Yeah, it could happen, but it's irrelevant. I mean, the whole idea here is, are the council members aware of more than just the consistency vote? And they should have read the staff report, to Don's point, they should have read the staff report, they should have known that there was some discrepancies. If that was the case, pull it then.
Okay.
Yeah, my only reason for asking if he was here because I would, anyway, was to know that, that he could address our questions if we had some, if he even did get pulled at the last minute.
And he would do that.
He'd send his co-person or whatever.
Okay. Other questions or comments or a motion?
Well, I have a question for number.
On number one.
Oh, okay.
I, I thought we'd take these one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably easiest.
They're all really kind of a package at this point.
Okay.
It would be easier to, to take one vote if that would work out. We can separate it if we need to.
No, that's all right.
Easiest path.
Whatever makes it easy, we'll do it. Board does not conduct public hearings. We did a straw pull on that last time. I think it was a slam dunk. Anybody have objection to that one?
P and Z was slam dunk too.
You had an objection, please?
Well, I have some questions.
Okay.
So it says that the council may call for a second public hearing for any reason. I know that we can do that any, at any time.
You can do that today, right.
Right, we can do that today, but it's also the whole idea behind public hearing, besides the fact that we get information, is that our citizens also hear it. So is there some, going to be some timelines associated because, you know, to let people know, right? If you call a public hearing the day before a public hearing, isn't there a seven-day?
It isn't a public.
No, so what, probably what would happen is it would come back to you at a meeting, and you would say, well, you know what, we want to have a second public hearing.
Yep.
So that's going to delay the case.
Okay.
And we would, we would notice and do the typical public hearing notice that we would do.
Okay, and well, when this all is revised, will you put that information in there? Because to me, I didn't get that from you.
Okay, that technically doesn't need to be in the LDO. I mean, that's, actually, it already is. It's not in what you have in front of you, but the LDO would require notice of any new public hearing.
Okay, so it is in the LDO, just not in the summary?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that delay is one of the reasons why I object to number two. I'm all for council conducting the second public hearing versus the Planning and Zoning Board doing it. And, right, that's a slam dunk. I, I don't think there's any concern about that. But two reasons. One is the way this was originally proposed to us, that we would definitely conduct a second public hearing. So it would come back to us, a second public hearing would be conducted, and we could act on it that night, right after that second public hearing. Now, if it comes back to us and we want a second public hearing, there's going to be a delay. There has to be advertisement and, and all of that going on, so it's probably not even the next meeting, probably not even two weeks.
We could technically do the next meeting.
Could be.
If it's two weeks away, yes.
Well, there's still a, a delay in the development process, in, in the approval process, which I don't know would go over very well with some folks who want to get these things through quicker than we do, maybe. And the other reason, there's a form, certain formality with a public hearing. There's a sign, there's advertisement, there's notification to the people within 400 or 800 feet or whatever that, that, that number is. Granted, I remember Mr. France saying that people are really interested, are going to know about this anyway, and they probably are, but I think there's a lot of people who may be not knowing about what's going on. If there was another sign and an advertisement, would know and would be able to voice their opinion. I think we're cutting out some public input that we are not intending to do by making this optional. I'd rather see the option, in other words, the public hearing at our discretion cut out. I'd like there to be a second public hearing based on the same criteria that's used now, except that public hearing being with us as opposed to planning.
And I would say that we can, like it's been said, we can always call a public hearing anytime, so that's not really changing anything. So I don't think we're really cutting out public input.
Well, and they also have the opportunity to speak to us if public speaks out at the beginning of the meeting for, I mean, they only get three versus five minutes, but it's still an, an opportunity to speak to council as a board. And then they still also have the opportunity to email and call us and social medias and whatever else, but I just, the part that I've struggled with is the, the logic behind the second public hearing at P and Z or whether it's at us is if changes were made to the project. I've been sitting here 11 years now. I have never seen changes to the project that made the project worse. It always got better. Maybe just a little better, maybe a lot better, but it always got better. So to me, giving people the opportunity to, to voice their concerns if public speaks out still, I think, honors the intent of what we were trying to do, allowing people to speak to their electeds in a public forum, and then still providing them the ability to contact us via email, phone calls, and whatever else without adding more bureaucracy to the pro, proposal or process and/or delaying it because we just feel like it needs another public hearing and pushing it off two weeks.
So, may I suggest that when I make my usual remarks after we've had a public hearing, I used to say, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board. If there are any changes, there'll be a second public hearing. Instead, we add something to my remarks. While this is the only public hearing, we, you can come back until, well, you can come back until the decision's made, and if the decision is so far out, we can work on the wording, but remind them that they'll have several opportunities between the public hearing and the decision point, and I'll reemphasize that. Mr. Stiegel?
Yeah, just, consistent with the last sign, I want to remind the council that, you know, the, the public hearing kind of sets up, it really sets a low standard. Now, Cary's public hearings are beyond what most municipalities do, but for those items where we recognize the council's commitment to transparency and informing the public and, and those instances that require, you know, the, the vagaries of that project, we will go so far beyond the public hearing. My concern would be is we just have the public hearing, it kind of provides false comfort that we're actually meeting that standard. And so I, I like the, you know, it, we know what you want to accomplish. There still is that public speaks out, and when it needs to be, and we use the gas station as a reference last time, it wasn't a public hearing, but we've made sure that all the concerned citizens were given an opportunity to engage not only with us but with the developer, and we will always do that. So we will always exceed. Even if there was a second public hearing, we would, that might not be sufficient because the, the venue, this venue, this very formal environment sometimes doesn't lend itself to the best engagement. And so I, I think we will continue to meet your high expectations and the expectations that citizens have, whether you have two or, or not. So I don't, I don't think anything magical will happen through the second one.
Yeah, and I'm, just two concerns that we brought up, that I think we can mon, we can monitor this and see how it goes as well. And the second thing is, I'm really not concerned about pushing it off for two weeks. This is a long process anyway. It's, you know, six months to a year, and it impacts our whole community, so pushing them off to the next meeting, if we do deem as a council that we need another public hearing, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to know the process by which people will have the opportunity and, and the fact that we'd be voting on it. I, I absolutely agree with you that I think we have given our citizens lots of ways to contact us, and that none of them have been shy.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jack.
No, I, I really appreciate your comments, Don, because I think, you know, we're kind of on something when I listen to what the town manager said and what you said. I mean, we have a public hearing. Afterwards, we have dialogue. We have discussions. We have concerns, and the applicant, you know, unless they're just dumb, kind of hear it, you know, and they, they know what the, those concerns are, and they're either going to address them or not. So I, I, I do think sometimes when I talk to people that when you have some of the public hearings, there, there's just this innate lack of trust with government. So they, you know, they come to the meetings, especially second ones where you have a public hearing, and, and, and there isn't a lot of confidence that things are going to get solved there. But what we have a good tracker, track record of is acting on those concerns. So if, you know, if, if it's leaving here, going to P and Z, and improvements are made, you know, is there a, when it comes back for the vote, those improvements are discussed before the vote. So I guess what I'm struggling with is how do we do that timing so that people at that meeting know enough during public speaks out to speak, you know?
Because they'll speak before we do.
Well, that's the problem. That's, that's the part I'm just thinking of.
Well, I think, I think the reality is, let's say a case goes to Planning and Zoning Board, the applicant makes changes, but the changes don't satisfy what the citizens want. That's the most likely scenario, because yes, it's improved beyond what it was before, but it doesn't satisfy what they were hoping for. When they come to the public speaks out, they would say, hey, changes were made and we're not happy with the changes, they didn't do it. And then we have the decision whether we want to table it or not.
Yep.
Based on that. And I think this is very, this is a very clean-cut process to me. I think this works, and let's try, as Lori said, let's try it, and if it doesn't work, we'll revise it then.
And the staff report's pretty clear on the changes that are made since the public hearing. I think that's up front, isn't it, if I remember right?
Yeah.
Always is.
We highlight those, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we're unanimous about that, but I think we've discussed that, that, oh, I'm sorry.
No, two little tweaks, I guess I was, in, in effect, even though it wasn't codified, we, in effect, with the gas station, for example, semi-called for a neighborhood meeting.
Yep.
Now, we don't, I guess there's notices more necessary, so now, we, we got a hold of those people, right?
Actually, what happened was, we tabled it and suggested to the applicant that they have a neighborhood meeting. They have to do that.
That's good.
And we could have come back and.
Sure, okay. So that still works. So that's a tool, that's all I said, that's a tool we have. It's to table it and suggest a neighborhood meeting. And they come back and say, we're not going to do, well, that's a tool.
We can table and suggest anything we want.
Sure, okay, that's my point.
We can not put it back on the agenda. I mean, there, it's, it's just hard to do it in abstract. Every project is different.
That's good. We got to wait, I guess.
But in, in the end, it really always works, you know? And I haven't been here as long as Don, but the developers really do have an understanding. And what they get in, in Cary is that if, if they do things the right way and they know going in to anticipate there are going to be changes and the public is going to be heard, they expect that, but then they also now can expect that the likelihood of approval, meaning that if they are responsive and they're willing to compromise with the citizens, that they won't have to go and get, do everything that the citizens expect, that the council's looking for both sides to try to come to some sort of agreement and understanding. And in many municipalities, you can try and try and try and please, and you can never even get a sense, is it ever going to even matter? And in here, they have, there's a lot of evidence to demonstrate that if you engage in a, in a productive process in, in, in good faith, that it will benefit you, and the citizens are also able to, to see that their voice matters, and if they're reasonable. And so, you know, Cary just works, you know? It really does.
So my, my follow-up on that was that you said you would table it and suggest whatever. That, that also doesn't mean that people are going to be notified again. If people are here that night and public speaks out, whether they said anything or not, they hear our discussion and we decide to table it, then they still have the opportunity to communicate with us. So we still have lots of public, we still have the opportunity for, for them to get a hold of us and have further dialogue if we just table it. That's all we'd have to do. We don't have to call for another public, we just table it. Then they could come speak at public speaks out the next meeting after we've tabled it, and they'd get another chance to speak. As far as things always getting better, I think that the, the trick would be, sometimes, Don, maybe it's, it gets better, but sometimes it gets different. So if they'd have known, like. So, if they'd have known, like, they don't want to, so, which is, we cover it the same way, like, maybe something changes because a buffer doesn't have to be as big because they went to a different size lot. So, now, all of a sudden, they thought they had a 50-foot buffer, and they opposed apartment buildings, but now, they're coming back with the townhouses, and now it's only a 20-foot buffer, then it doesn't, in, in some ways, we think it's better because it's single-family or, or it's different, but that, they get a chance to come still speak out about it, we still can table it, and we still get to hear them. So, no matter whether it gets better or different, we still get to hear about it, and we still can table it if we feel like we heard a lot of stuff that's different.
Basically, summary, we have all the tools we need.
Right, make a motion.
Better is different in a good way.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion.
We have one more item that's listed, and the item was no change the ETJ role or overall membership. Any discussion about that one?
I'll go with that.
Whoop, Jack.
Well, the only discussion is in the spirit of moving forward.
Really?
I'm going to support that, but I think that we, I still think there's a lot of merit to changing the ETJ role and the overall membership, but I ain't going crazy over it.
And Lori made a good point last time about, you know, we could change this still incrementally in the future, so, we might change it later.
Prevising it.
Yeah, engineers, we don't like to change more than one thing at a time.
Yeah.
That's what we do on race cars, actually.
See? Okay, on that note, and I feel like we've beaten this horse. May I move to adopt the statement of consistency as attached to the staff report and approve Act 5 LDO amendments?
There's a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose?
No.
Six to one, motion passes. That concludes our agenda, and if there are no other items to be brought forward, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second and a third. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, we adjourn. Thank you.